I'm Pastor Anthony Steele, new pastor of Erie, Alanaanine Church, and just wanted to welcome you here. Without any further ado, I want to bring forward the president of the Hilltop Business Association, Mr. Kevin. Say hello. Give him a hand if he comes.
Thank you all for being here. It's nice to see you turn out. When we realized there wasn't going to be another organization putting on a forum, we thought it was really important so that everybody had an opportunity to hear all the candidates, especially since we've got such a great field. So, thank you all for being here because otherwise they'd be just talking to us. We want to thank me and me because they're always hosting us both for our meetings and supporting their things and of course this event. And with that, I'm gonna let Carol take over and she'll run the rest of the evening for us. So, thank you for being here.
Alright. Good evening. It's nice to be running things. It's exciting to be here and to see seven... Well, actually there are six on the seat up here, but there are a total of seven candidates for city council for District 3. Now, that is phenomenal. I love it. It means that you are going to tonight get a chance to see lots of diversity in perspective, in point of view, in values, and you're gonna be able to identify for yourself who is best aligned with what you think is important for District 3. And so, we have some questions tonight for all of these great candidates. They have come from all of you. We consolidated a few of them so that we can get through it because my bedtime is nine o'clock just here. We're gonna try and be done a little before nine, and with seven candidates, we want to make sure we give all of them sufficient time for you to hear from them. So, let's...let me do this. Let me, first of all, introduce the panelists themselves who have put together all of these questions for you. You met Kevin Roseman. Maybe if they can stand over here to my right and you can acknowledge them all at one time. Kevin Roseman, who's president of the Hilltop Business Association and the Cross District Association, and he's also restoring the Brown Star Grill. Can I still get my liver and onions there? Just checking. And he understands what these candidates are going through because he is a former deputy mayor of the City of Shoreline. Thank you, Kevin. And next to him, you have met Pastor Anthony Steele, who is the pastor of our church and our host. Alright, now, don't make me take my earrings off. Justin Layton knows exactly what that means. Alright, thank you Pastor for hosting tonight. And next to him is Reverend Dr. Francis Lorenz. She is pastor of the Center for Spiritual Living, and she's been a resident of the Hilltop since 2002. Some of you may know her from the Sisters Cities International Board, Sisters Cities Council. She's also a member of the New Community Healthcare Alliance, and she works very closely with associated ministries on many interfaith activities. At her church, the Center for Spiritual Living, we call it the Rock and Roll Church. Me and my grandkids, we go there when we want a rock and roll. Francis Lorenz, thank you. And next to her, Bradley Killian, who is the president and CEO of the Hilltop Action Coalition. And they have worked and they're still working tirelessly on putting this whole program together tonight in hopes that it will help you make the right decisions about who you want to represent you on the council. Alright. Okay, so shall we get started? Let's get started with a presentation on Proposition 1. We'll have two perspectives tonight presented to you. Both will present for five minutes. They won't debate, they won't go back and forth. This is not like the presidential elections where they go back and forth. They'll each have five minutes to present, and after they conclude, they are welcome to stay for the rest of the presentations from the candidates. And so, we'll start with Tom Pearson. He is the president and CEO of Tacoma Pierce County Chamber of Commerce. And he was voted the Executive of the Year, Chamber Executive of the Year last year for 2014, which is a very prestigious national award. Congratulations, Tom. And you're here to present the chamber's perspective on Proposition 1. Five minutes.
Well, thank you. And I would like to thank the Hilltop Business Association for hosting this. I think it's...thank you for coming out. And I know we're the warm-up crowd here for a warm-up here a little bit for you guys, so I'll try to keep my time short. The...so, let's start to talk and have a discussion about what 15 Now is and why...where are we at today and why we're here and where we're coming from, from the Chief of Commerce and the Business Group. And by the way, I've got some fact handouts for you. I'll leave them up here, I'll hand them around for you. Gives you some facts in terms...and gives you a little perspective of where $15 or 15 Now would put Tacoma in comparison to other cities. So, what is...so, today, we've got an initiative. It's Initiative 1, will be Initiative 1, which will be on the voters, will be in front of the voters November 2015. If it passed, that goes...our minimum wage goes from $9.47 to $15.00 January 1st, 2016. So, you know, for us, we talk about 15 Now, we say it's too extreme. Why is it too extreme? One, it's a 58% increase overnight. So, what does that mean? That means our small businesses, you know, whether you're a mom and pop restaurant around the corner, you need to adjust your...you can't adjust your costs that quick. And so, that's gonna be...it's gonna be a problem for many small businesses. And in this community, we're made up of mostly small businesses. And so, we've never said 15 is a bad number. What we've said is overnight is a bad thing for Tacoma. And especially when you go city by city, these businesses could go across the border, and so, it could vacate Tacoma. And so, we need to be thoughtful in what their approach is, and we've said we need to have a community discussion of what this looks like. And so, we, amongst other people, asked the city council, the mayor and the council, to come up with an alternative plan to 15 Now. And the task force was formed, and they're working their way... The task force presented back to the council this week, and the council's now working through that. But 15 Now is not just about $9.47 to $10.00, applies to extreme. It's also because it makes it a felony offense. So, if I had a business outside Tacoma and I happened to send an employee into Tacoma, it's a felony offense. It's not a whoops, I'm in the state. It's you're automatically a felony offense, I can't vote anymore. And also, in state law, there's a three-year lookback on employees. So, if I did something wrong to an employee, didn't pay them right, didn't do something, and there's a three-year liability. And that's state law across the state. It's the way the legislature put that together. This would change it to 10 years. I now have a 10-year lookback on employees. And so, that would...that affects obviously my insurance, it affects everything about how to run a business. So, too extreme is on multi-layers, not just $9.47 to $10.00 or to $15.00. And again, if we looked at a phased approach, we talked to employees, talked to employers, talked to the community, and that's...the task force process started that, and the city council is working through that now. To come up with what's best for Tacoma. Not a small handful of folks who went out and got 3,000 signatures to put this on the ballot. It's what's best for Tacoma by Tacoma residents to figure out what makes sense. And so, that's what we're encouraging of. It's what the task force was put together for. Task force's mix of labor, business, nonprofits, who came together. They brought two plans forward. One is a two-part ramp to 15. The other one is a quicker version to 12, or it's a ramp to 12. Simple, doesn't include any other laws, it just adjusts the minimum wage up. And our research shows this community wants a higher minimum wage, and we're supportive of that. We just are concerned of how do we get there? And it makes sense that you have to make a pathway there. You can't shock the system. You shock the system, businesses go out of business. And instead of adding new jobs, you're gonna lose jobs. And that's our concern, to what's best for Tacoma. And we believe that 15 Now is not best for Tacoma. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next up is Maximilian Hyland. He is a 15 Now activist who helped write Proposition 1, and he also won coin toss to go second.
I did win a coin toss today, it was pretty cool. Thank you all for having me as well. And I would actually like to thank the chamber for coming and engaging with us in dialogue and asking the mayor to have a task force. We reached out to the city council, asking for a task force, and we're basically blown off. So, I'm glad somebody came around and was able to shake a little action there. Thank you for that. Well, what it comes down to is, a U-DUP study showed that here in Pierce County, specifically in Tacoma, you need to make about $17.18 an hour to live with one dependent. $15.00 an hour is a compromise between what we have and what we need and what is right. When we hear a lot of hemming and hawing about prices will be raised and jobs will be lost, but wherever the minimum wage has been risen, prices haven't gone up. There's no empirical evidence to back up that theoretical basis, which I'm not surprised by. You can't just raise prices whenever you feel like it. Prices are set by the market. Supply and demand controls prices. If you could just raise prices whenever you want, why would you wait for the minimum wage to go to raise prices? And I can say the same thing for the jobs question. If you could just lay people off and continue running your business and meeting your market share, why are you employing superfluous employees? Why are you running your business inefficiently? So, and that also actually matches up with what we've seen happen around the country when the minimum wage has gone up. Unemployment has not skyrocketed, and business has not imploded. Unemployment has actually gone down. Use6 specifically, which actually measures unemployment, not unemployment violence, goes down where the minimum wage shows up. And, alright? And small businesses fare better more often than not. Specifically, Proposition 1 exempts a vast majority of businesses in Tacoma, a vast majority of businesses, a vast majority of small businesses in Tacoma. About 48% of businesses in the city receive prorated VNO taxes or some sort of reduced scheduling system. And Proposition 1 categorically excludes them from having to pay the new higher minimum wage. The task force proposals do not exclude them. They just phase them in over a longer period of time. Proposition 1 is gentler on small businesses. And really, when it comes right down to it, small businesses have been harmed more by big box stores like Walmart and international trade deals than any labor movement or any workers movement to raise the minimum wage or get decent standards of living or healthcare has ever or will ever do. American small businesses are resilient. We're an innovative, resourceful, and headstrong people. We're not gonna fall down overnight just because we have to pay a living wage. And, you know, small businesses maybe have a hard time. It's hard to keep a business open when no one has any spending money to come to your business. People don't shop at Walmart because they love Walmart. People don't shop at Walmart because it's closer to their home. People shop at Walmart because that's what they can afford. And if they were making $15.00 an hour and were able to pay their rent on time and be able to keep up on the bills and feed their kids, they'd shop at the mom and pop store down the road. Proposition 1 is not too extreme. C-TAC is doing fine. C-TAC is doing great. They have a $15.00 minimum wage, and they did it overnight. Seattle's doing okay. They went up to 11. This guy did not fall. And, you know, maybe they'd be doing great like C-TAC if they'd gone straight to 15 too. And the question of capital flight, whether or not people just move their business across the street to Furpress, that is a concern. It hasn't happened yet anywhere the minimum wage has been raised, but it is a legitimate concern. I share that concern. But so far, there's been no evidence that that is going to happen. As far as the felony offense goes, we've heard a lot of hemming and hawing about that too. You know, I think theft is a crime. I think most people can agree that theft is a crime. If you steal from your boss, you go to jail. If I stole $5,000 from my boss, I would go to jail. If my boss steals $5,000 from me, should my boss not get in trouble? Some sort of trouble? I don't think that's a ludicrous proposition. Oh, yes, and the city's proposals, the task force proposals, are not free of gimmicks. They exempt people who are under 18. They exempt collective bargaining clauses. It is...there's a lot of nitty-gritty in there that I do implore you to look into on your own before you contact us or the council members. Yeah, I think...thank you very much for your time.
Yes, I have to acknowledge, Maximilian, I have to acknowledge I am a headstrong woman, creative, headstrong person. I think that's what you call this in Brazilian. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Tom Pearson, also, for presenting the perspective of the chamber. We appreciate it. And so, now, let's move to the meat. You had a little appetizer, and now, we're gonna move to the main course. How about that? You ready to eat? Are you ready to eat? Alright, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call up our candidates in the order. We had so much fun tonight because we made these candidates pull a number to see what order they'd be in at the table and who's gonna answer the first question. We don't want any accusations of, you know, sort of waiting the thing in favor of anybody. So, went through a lot of effort to make sure it's fair. So, Tom McCarthy, if you wouldn't mind just standing right behind your chair and your name up there, and we'll get everybody up. And Whitney Brady. And Ms. Chris Blondin is next. Yes, Mr. Robert Hill, good to see you, Robert. Glad you're here. Mr. Justin Layton. Mr. Keith Blocker. And Mr. Valentine Smith. These are all the great candidates. Isn't it amazing? Wow, I'm sorry. Alright, you may all take your seats. We've got a microphone up there that should be passed down to Tom because he's gonna go first. Each candidate will present a two-minute opening statement. Two minutes. Two minutes. Two.
Where's our timekeeper?
Two minutes. We do have a timekeeper, and Tom, don't make me take my earrings off. Alright, two-minute opening statement. Just tell us a little bit about yourself and things that are important to you, and then pass the microphone to the next person, please. Thank you, Tom.
My name's Tom McCarthy, and I'm running for Tacoma, City Council, Position 3. And I just wanna start by saying, just recognize that this is an act of civic courage for Alanaanine Church to have a civic event like this. Less than a month ago, of course, there was the tragic massacre that happened in South Carolina. So, it's really an act of courage to have an event like this. So, thank you. You know, I'm also very excited to see the other organizations here. Hilltop Action Coalition, I was a board member with the Hilltop Action Coalition with Bradley, who's now president, and worked with the Hilltop Business Association, and it's just...it's wonderful. I just feel like, you know, I just know so many people in this room. It feels wonderful to be here. So, leadership. Proven leadership in the community is something that Hilltop needs, District 3 needs, and Tacoma needs. And I wanna talk a little bit about, I was born on Fort Lewis. I went to high school here in Tacoma, at Bellarmine High School, Irish Catholic family. I've lived on Hilltop for 10 years. Part of District 3 is central Tacoma where I went to high school. And I get my car fixed, it's south Tacoma area. So, this is where I'm from. And I've got a six-year-old daughter who just graduated kindergarten at Bryant Elementary. And I teach at Pierce College. So, that's a little bit about me. I wanted to say that I'm proud to be endorsed by my own union, and I'm proud to be endorsed by the nominated transit union, the Bus Drivers Union at Pierce Transit. And there's three things that I've been talking to people about, and they've been telling me that they want opportunity and family wage jobs here in Tacoma. We've had a stagnant economy for over 50 years. And public safety is something that folks want and a vision for a better Tacoma. So, I'm gonna go ahead and pass the mic, but I'm just very excited to be here.
Good evening, everyone. I am Whitney Brady. I'm born and raised in the Hilltop, almost 30 years there. I have two daughters. My oldest daughter just graduated from Stanley Elementary School, where I was also attending. You know, all my fellow candidates up here may be very nice people, but Tacoma needs a representative that's gonna fight for strong issues and not be afraid to speak up and go against other council members. If you elect, you know, there's a lot of moderate candidates out here, a few conservative. There's only one progressive candidate, and that's me. When you talk about the national crisis of things going on like police brutality and violence against our unarmed brothers and sisters, I have experience in speaking on and engaging our own city to correct its current policies and procedures. We have a history of the police violence in Tacoma and surrounding areas. None of my fellow candidates have the experience or were with them to speak to that cause. Speaking of low-income housing, some of my fellow candidates were participants in excluding and helping to gentrify our Hilltop neighborhood in the Hilltop Subarea Plan. I led the effort to include numbers that would be affordable to our current residents, which is not $41,000 like the current, the original plan proposed. So, anyone that is making less than $41,000, you know, I've worked hard on your behalf and I will continue to fight for those sorts of issues. My time is up, thank you.
Thank you very much for hosting this forum. My name is Chris Blondin, and I am a business owner here in Tacoma. I was born and raised in Tacoma in Pierce County. I bought my home in central Tacoma in 2001, and so, I've lived here for 14 years in central Tacoma. Graduated from the University of Washington Tacoma, invested in two businesses here in Tacoma, and I am running for city council because I feel that we all have something to contribute. And I have contributed a lot to Tacoma, but I needed to be more involved civically. I feel that as a business owner, I can encourage more people to open businesses in Tacoma and to encourage other people to come into Tacoma. There's a lot of wonderful programs that we want to do, we want to accomplish. As Whitney said, you know, we do have a homeless problem. We do have a jobs problem. And the only way, and not the only way, but a very strong part of that is by encouraging more economic growth. And so, the backbone of Tacoma is small business. We've lost so many of our larger businesses, and I don't wanna see that happen anymore. So, my goal as a business owner is to work with our current entities, the chamber, the Economic and Development Board. I wanna work with the City of Tacoma. I want to work to encourage more growth because the only way that we're going to be support these fabulous programs that Tacoma has to offer is by bringing in more revenue and making that happen. We are also needing more...sorry, I think my time's up. So, I should...oh, my field, okay. Let me peek at my thing. So, what I'm seeing right now in the city council, they're doing a good job, but I can see that they can do a better job. I feel like Tacoma right now is being a little more reactive rather than proactive. And so, my role on the city council would definitely be more proactive, and I wanna thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you for having this event. I've been involved in politics often my last 20 years. Attend every city council meeting or committee meeting, although I consider it to be called a gadfly. This year, I'm running for both for combination of political and personal reasons.
What's your name?
Robert Hill. The main political reason is I have looked at the charter, I've been involved with other political parties and organizations, and the city council has been the wrong size for a while. It's been nine members for a long, long time. The size of the House of Representatives of Congress has been 435 for 100 years. The population's tripled in the last 100 years. The size of the house hasn't tripled to give representation to people. I think the size of the city council needs to be 25, at least 20, as one charter proposal, to provide representation to the people. Now, whether that's adding a second member to each of the districts or two members, or just the at-larges, I have preference with the at-larges, but I want people to think about, how do we have better representation? Why do we just have to have one winner per district, per district race? And adding to the size of the council is important. Changing how we elect those new people is also important. Taking the top two or three winners in the general, not just the one winner with the plurality, AKA dirty voting. Four years ago, I wrote the initiative for those who first required panic sentences. And a week before the election, November 8th, I debated a different political issue that I believe caused the police chief to have me arrested, made me late, four hours late for my parties at the Stone Game. And he is now a defendant in federal lawsuit. I have followed up anonymous citizen U-Pan, CRP. They don't have the same authority. They have the same authority as the Seattle's OPA. They can't really investigate police officers. Or provide penalties. That is a change that has to be first negotiated with the unions. Am I on my time?
Yeah, that's about true.
And I have materials to leave wherever the paper is for that end.
Yes. Are you ready?
Yeah, you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Justin Layton, and I'm running for city council, Proposition 3, along with the other individuals here tonight. I first want to start off by thanking you all for being here and the host organizations for doing this. This is a really important process in our elections, actually getting to know the candidates and hearing from them. And so, I appreciate you taking the time out of your busy schedules to be here and listen. I grew up just a little bit out of the city limits, unincorporated Pierce County. Went to high school at Franklin Pierce High School. I grew up in a family that worked for my grandfather's small business in Hualda. And because both my parents worked there when the business was slumping, my parents were the last people to get paid, and sometimes often three or four weeks later. My brother was struck with childhood cancer, and it wasn't the fact that the cancer really put a detriment to our family, it was the medical bills afterwards. And it's great that he's alive today with two beautiful kids, but my parents still reeled from the medical bills that happened. It's these instances that make me realize that community matters and strong families matter in our community, and that we need to have policies that are equitable for everyone and that we need to have services that are equitable for everyone. This includes affordable housing and low-income housing. This includes transportation that doesn't cost a ton to do it. We have to get people moving in our community, and these are hard decisions that we have to make. And it does take leadership, folks. It does take hard leadership. And I've proven that over the time. As soon as I moved into this community, I got involved. I've been the chair of my neighborhood council. I did co-chair the Hilltop Subarea Plan. I currently co-chair the Transportation Commission, where we've just finished the first draft of our transportation budget in the city. And I'm currently on the inaugural board of the YWCA's Associate Board. These experiences matter, and I can bring that to the table. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Keith Blocker. Again, thank you all for participating in this event this evening. Really appreciate it. This is what civic engagement is all about. Again, my name is Keith Blocker. I was born and raised in the City of Philadelphia. And growing up in Philadelphia, I experienced extreme poverty. I've been homeless far too many times for any person to have to experience. Needless to say, education was something that was instilled in me as a value that if I utilized it, I could make myself be the person that I wanna be in the future. And I stand before you today as an individual who is one of the first people in this family to graduate from college and earn the bachelor's degree. I moved here... I moved here. Thank you. I moved here to Tacoma, Washington at the age of twenty-five with nothing but a high school diploma and a pest control license. I was an exterminator before I left the city of Philadelphia. I started out here going to Tacoma Community College, and I was able to transfer from the TCC to the University of Pugestown by utilizing the resources that were available to me, one of which is, because I'm visually impaired, I was able to get access to the resources from the Washington Stereos for the Blind, and I took advantage of those resources and earned a bachelor's degree. I'm the candidate that has been endorsed by Lauren Walker, who's the incumbent. I've also been endorsed by Mary Marilyn Strickland, Councilmember Robert Tomps, and Councilmember Victoria Wooders. They did not endorse me because they think I'm the candidate that's going to agree with them. They endorsed me because they believe I'm the candidate that will sit up there as a team player and challenge them and help the city of Tacoma move forward so that we can do things that are progressive, that will impact low-income individuals as well as homeless people, as well as our senior citizens. So, I'm the individual that's gonna help bring our council together so that we can find some consensus. I also say that... Well, my time is up. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Valentine Smith, and I wanted to thank you all for giving up the party of Thursday evening to come for this. And man, you guys are pretty tough when I was talking. I drew the wrong number. So, like Keith, I'm not from here. I was born here. I wasn't raised here. I was actually born and raised in New York. What brought me here was JBLM. I served twelve years active duty in the United States military. My wife and I met down there at JBLM a few years ago when we were looking to get out, and we couldn't go anywhere we wanted to go. The army would have sent us anywhere in the country. We chose Tacoma because we love the community, we love the city, we love being here, we love being a part of it. So, no, we're not from here, but we did choose to be here. Once we bought our first home and we realized that we were gonna stay here and that we were gonna be part of the Hilltop community, that was my introduction to Justin. I started going to the Central Neighborhood Council meetings. Justin was kind enough to draft me. So, I've been on the Central Neighborhood Council floor now for the last two and a half years. I'm also one of the founding members of the City Events and Recognitions Committee. Every year, we put on the MLK Celebration at the Convention Center, and we also do the City of Destiny Awards that are now held at Chatham Stadium. So, I've been active in the community, I've been here for quite a few years. We love being here. We love being Tacominous. Four months ago, we were privileged enough to welcome our brand new daughter, the newest Tacoma for us. She was born right down the street from St. Joe's. So, we have invested interest in this community. We're not going anywhere for a while. We put down roots. And I'm a firm believer that Tacoma's got some problems. It's a great city, but it's not without some issues. And I just can't sit back and complain. "Oh, my God, these streets have such horrible potholes", and just, you know, kind of complaining, then never do anything about it. Or, "Oh, you know, the police did this, the city council does that." Well, you know, I'm just not that kind of person to sit there and sort of complain about things and not get involved. So, that's why I'm running for city council, to be a voice for you, my neighbors, down there at City Hall, and sort of push the issues that matter to us. You know, I can tell you all day... Oh, I'm out of time. I got red carded.
Are you there, microphone?
Yes, here.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now? Well done, everybody. Well done. I'm keeping within the time. Thank you very much for that. We appreciate it. And so, here's what's gonna happen. The microphone is going down to Tom McCarthy. And what I have in my hand...
You mean I get to be number one every time?
No, you don't, my brother. You do not.
That's an auspicious sign.
And then Whitney will be number one, and Chris, and so on, and so on, and so on. Everybody gets a chance to be number one. You're all number one, right? So, the first question is coming from the audience. All of these questions came from the audience members. Thank you, audience, for participating in that. Yes?
These are one-minute.
These are one-minute answers. One minute. One minute. One-minute answers, okay? Don't make me take my earrings off. Mic's not working well for me. Okay, I'm gonna use my outside voice. One-minute answers for these questions, okay? So, Tom, and all of you will answer the same question. Tom, you'll be first, and then pass the mic on to Whitney. What is your plan for commerce on MLK Way? What's your plan for commerce on Martin Luther King Way?
So, I had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Mack, who has owned a business in Tacoma for fifty-eight years. And he said that the K Street Business District, what is now the Hilltop Business District, was the second biggest one after downtown. That's a long time ago. Ever since I've been in Tacoma, there's been a lot of empty storefronts on here. And what is it that Hilltop means? What is it that Tacoma means? The single biggest thing is there's an image issue. And that image is, you know, the old stereotypes of Hilltop and some of the negative activities that happened here in the past keep people away. So, we need to have an event that will bring people here and change the way that people see Hilltop. Except that we've already had that event. It's called the Tacoma's Hilltop Street Fair. We had five thousand people last year, and I was proud to work with the Hilltop Business Administration as the event organizer for that event. That's what we need to do for Tacoma.
So, MLK Business District, that was once very thriving with many stores and diversified shopping opportunities for our fellow community members. And as we see now, it has seen a very dramatic downturn. It's on the rise. What I would like to see is continuation of things like Spaceworks that gives opportunities to young entrepreneurs that are developing businesses that are not just retail stores, but actually serve community and the interest of people.
So, I'm really excited that the Link by Rail is planning to come up through Hilltop. I think that in itself is going to generate a lot of enthusiasm for more people to want to come up to Hilltop, open businesses, make this a great place to live, work, play, have a wonderful life here. There's a lot of things happening right now. We've got the Hilltop Kitchen that's opened. I think that that's one step of getting more businesses for younger people that want to be a part of the Hilltop. We've got all these wonderful bars. We've got all these wonderful restaurants that are coming in. But we have some places that are also leaving, like Key Bank. I do think that if we just keep this momentum going as a business owner, and if I were to make it on the council, I would want to be somebody that would also be available to people to come to, to talk to, a mentor program with other types of businesses. I'd like to see, I'd like to have some of our local businesses be mentors and be a valuable resource. And I, for one person, would love to be a valuable resource for the Hilltop community. Thank you. Robert?
I would presume the Sixth Avenue would be the northern border. If anything, North of Sixth Avenue is already covered by health concerns. I would not say that I have a plan for commerce. I would say that people should think about two possible ideas that could improve not just MLK, J. D. Way, but other parts of the city. One, as a category, would be, you look at other parts of the country, old parts of the cities, New York even. People had a business storefront on the first floor, and then they lived upstairs. Ding ding ding, someone comes to buy shoes, buy groceries, they come downstairs. They lived where they worked. You didn't have zoning pushing people to live over here, and you can only have this kind of working things over here. And if there's a way to eliminate, I don't know how many different zoning blocks are on MLK, but to make not just that street, but other streets free of zoning. Free of, you can only live, single-family, double-family, multifamily. Allow for a double plane of existence. You work downstairs, you work upstairs. Maybe you have two places of work, a home office upstairs and your storefront downstairs. Allow that to happen. Secondly, any height restrictions need to go.
I have moved to a higher plane now. I have more power. Justin, go for it.
Thank you. Absolutely. We need to focus on all the business districts in District Three. Hilltop from Sixth Avenue to Twenty-third really needs a lot of help. And I do think that the Link by Rail that will have four stations on MLK will be a great benefit that can drive some good development that fits the community in a lot of these vacant lots. We need to develop those vacant lots and get some commerce in those buildings. And then also, we need to work with Economic Development Department and start actually talking about, what are they doing with the business district? How are they partnering in a better way? Are they offering up resources that can help with marketing issues and help with events that help the business district thrive? What resources can the city actually do? And those are the questions that we need to have when we're down at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Keith?
Thank you. So, there are some things happening on MLK. We have the Key Bank, there's the subway. But when I think about business, I think about the failures that happened with the Rite Aid that used to exist there on the level of the MLK. And some of you know that Rite Aid is paying a company almost fifty thousand dollars per month for a prop for space that they're not using. So, that tells you that they would have been losing more money by opening and operating a business on an everyday basis. Now, that's problematic, but that creates an opportunity for us as a community. We can sit back and say, let's go to Rite Aid and discuss how we can supplement the cost and use that space that can help generate more capital in the community. And we just gotta be creative when we do that. So, Tacoma has a program called Tacoma Business Works. And they provide funding and loans to help small businesses grow. That could be a section. That could be an opportunity that could happen right there at that place.
Thank you, Keith. Valentine?
So, bringing back business at Hilltop. Like everybody else said, we really, really need to capitalize on this Link by Rail expansion. I think it's a great thing for the neighborhood. I'm looking forward to not having to walk up and down a big giant hill, so my hope is that that's gonna bring more people up here. The second thing is, I do agree with Keith. I think the city council needs to aggressively figure out some way to get somebody to anchor into that Rite Aid building. It's a shame. We loved shopping here when it was a grocery store. I wasn't here when it was a Rite Aid, but when it was a grocery store, we liked going here. It brought us up into Hilltop, and we sort of spent a lot of time in the area. So, we need to aggressively fill that space. And then, the other thing I'll say is, when the city council wants to do something, man, it can move mountains and it can move them quickly. I don't know if any of you have heard of the goldfish out there outside of Point of Pain Zoo. When the city council got behind it and wanted something open in that space, man, they made it happen, and something is now going to open in that space. And that's what we need here. We need that kind of effort from the city council to open things in our neighborhood, to get things where we need things to be. Thank you.
Thank you. This is sort of like speed dating with the candidates, isn't it? Yes. And Whitney, you're gonna get this next question. You ready?
Yes.
Okay, new question. I feel like I'm on Family Feud or something. With the cost of housing skyrocketing as we speak, what do you feel needs to take place to preserve cultural and generational history in the Hilltop community?
Whoa. The first thing we have to do is make it important that you're preserving low-income housing. As I mentioned before, the city has already went through a planning phase for the Hilltop, Hilltop SubArea Plan. Some of my candidates have worked on that plan. In that plan, it was lacking low-income housing. Ninety-nine percent of the people that worked within that plan were going to be displaced over a period of time. So, we first need to make an effort that we are ensuring that we capitalize and make sure that low-income housing a lot of it doesn't disappear. The second thing that we can do to preserve cultural preservation or cultural identity within the community is make sure, speaking about businesses, we're reaching out to the community. The Rite Aid was a city-backed plan to save the Hilltop, and it did not. The businesses that are moving into the area, we need to make sure they're catering to the community, the residents, not to the people that live all far out in the North End or wealthy and want to come to visit us in the cultural identity of Hilltop.
Thank you, Whitney. I'm a huge fan of mixed housing, of different income levels. I know that downtown, that was the original plan for the Wythrum Hotel, was to actually not just have it low-income housing. It was going to be a certain percentage of low-income housing, a certain percentage of median housing, and a certain percentage of a little bit higher-end housing. And I think that it's much better when everybody has an opportunity to mingle and have an idea of how everyone lives. And I think that when you start classifying, you know, low-income housing versus high-income housing and median income housing, I think that segregates people, and that's not what I want to do. I want to bring people together, and I think that that's one thing that we can do in the Hilltop, is make sure that we don't just say, this is low income, this is median income, and, you know, only the rich people live in the North End. I think that we can do something to make it all happen together, and that's what I would like to see. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Robert?
As I recall, question that relates to maintaining identity.
Cultural and generational history.
Part of that is the people that occupy society, and as far as the buildings and structures, it's a matter of popularity then. And there's a structure within city government for putting buildings, structures on a register, and more people that believe in that occurring participate in that process. There's lots of places just need to come down, like the Lousan. The Lousan should not have been maintained, taking up dead space in downtown. Some things need to just come down. There's a cost to that. And the question arises, who's gonna spend the cost to build something new? To build something new, the question is, well, what new kind of people are gonna be there? In general, if you build houses for muckety-mucks that have money, they're gonna be not living someplace else that opens up the space. The next people take over that place. And then the next round allows for more people to have freedom of movement, habitation. I'm not in a position to direct to developers what they need to put up, what the city... I'm not sure if the city council has removed the restrictions on requiring apartment or not, but that's been a discussion.
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it. Justin?
Thank you. Absolutely, the cost of housing is critical. And I'm a big believer that the cost of living is really important. And so, we need to keep Tacoma affordable. We need to do that through a holistic approach about living wages and equitable policies, about worker rights. That does include addressing affordable housing problems. We have over eight thousand individuals on the waiting list for housing vouchers in this community. We have a thousand individuals that are homeless, and we need to work on these things. When it's coming to developing and addressing the cultural and heritage of Hilltop, we need to make sure that any new developments reflect what is here today. And we need to make sure that we're preserving single-family housings that are just off the streets of MLK. Those are the residents that are gonna come and walk and be here. And it's important that we make sure that everything that we build new is holistic and it comes together in a nice way.
Thank you, Justin. Keith?
First thing we need to do is make it a priority. So, once we prioritize it as something that's important to us as a community, then we can take the necessary steps to ensure that that happens. Again, affordable housing is a major concern of mine. I think we need to do more as a community to address it. We need to strengthen our partnerships with the Tacoma Housing Authority. It's already doing a great work. But these are issues that we can make happen. But we have to prioritize, come together, communicate with one another, and collaborate, and figure out ways that we could make our communities more affordable, make sure that we show appreciation to what already exists as we add to it. But the city's gonna grow, and that's just a reality. And we gotta figure out ways to make it equitable so all people in our community can have a place to stay and have affordable housing.
Thank you, Keith. Valentine?
Last again. So, I think it's important to maintain the culture of Hilltop. It's part of why we moved here, because we love the neighborhood, and we don't want to see that change overnight. And we don't want to see the developers come in here and bulldoze what we do have that makes us what makes us, and build on the buildings. So, I think the first thing we need to do is, we need to come up with some sort of incentive, tax incentives, whatever incentives we can, and we need to get really creative to make the area appealing to developers so that they want to come in and that they want to build in the neighborhood. And then, part of that, though, is, again, to his point, we don't want to change the character of the neighborhood in the process. So, anything that they do propose that they would want to build here, number one, we'd want to make sure that it included affordable housing. housing, so that we weren't just pricing people out of the market. And then the second thing is, we need to make sure that it fits into the character of the neighborhood and it doesn't slowly overnight change Hilltop into something that is not. Thank you.
Thank you, Valentine. Actually, you're not last. It's Tom from Parkview next. Thank you.
So, Hilltop's a special place. I mean, I've lived here for ten years, and it's a special place. I'd say, I mean, one of the things that we have to deal with is gentrification is happening here, and it could. So we have to figure out how we can channel these forces to some light. Now, do we have to incentivize gentrification like it's happening right around the curve at elementary? There are dozens of townhouses down there that got ten-year tax subsidies. And I'm not sure what the city of Tacoma got out of it, what we got out of it. But sure as heck, when I'm doorbelling in that area, one side of the street is one demographic and the other is old Hilltop houses. And I can tell you, it has changed our community and not for the better. We need to get rid of that multifamily housing incentive and create something where, instead of a ten-year tax subsidy for developers that they put right in their pocket, we need to have that incentive be for developers that have twenty percent affordable housing. In that way, we can capture affordable housing in this area and keeps housing stock available. So even if it gentrifies, you know, the folks that have lived here a long time can still afford to live here.
Thank you, Tom. All right. Well done. Okay, so let's give the microphone to Chris Blondin, and she'll get this question. Next question is about the city's Click cable TV and internet network. What information would you need, Chris, before making a wise decision about whether or not to sell or lease the city's Click cable TV and internet network? What info would you need?
Well, first of all, as a Click subscriber from the beginning, I really enjoy having the city a part of Click. As has been reported, a lot of the, Click is losing money. And the shortfall is being made up by other Tacoma Public Utility customers. And I, I, I understand what they're doing. I don't necessarily agree with that. I guess the information I would need is, what would be their plan to take that off of the burden of the, the other TPU customers that don't subscribe to Click? And figure out how that Click can absorb those costs that they're losing, or those expenses that they're losing, and bring it back onto Click. They, they need to accept that responsibility and not let the rest of the TPU customers absorb that. And it's just not, it's not fair. If they're gonna be a legitimate functioning cable service, then they need to sustain themselves. And I'd like to find out exactly where they're losing the revenues and, and whether or not they just have to raise the prices, or, you know, they need to cut back.
Thank you, Chris. Robert?
I believe that Click was not losing money until the last six months or so, when the higher management at TPU, there's a new power division manager, the superintendent's still the same. They decided to have a new way of allocating costs going back ten, fifteen years. And that made Click now start losing money, as it had also been in the past. I was not able to attend the joint study session, I don't know if this, this last Tuesday or the week before. There aren't a lot of publicly-owned cable networks in the country. There was one in Georgia up until a few years ago. It's, it's something that's an uphill battle. It came into existence because of the desire of the public, because of the certain kind of people that live in Tacoma. I've spoken off and on around different things with Lieutenant Yaldison, who's the CEO. I helped with a few other people a few years ago bring the Arts Channel to, to one hundred. So I had a little bit of contact interest in, in, in the discussion. For those of you that have Comcast, ask yourself why?
Robert? Don't make me take my earrings off. Thank you, Robert. Justin, go ahead.
I'd like to expand the, the question to actually include to keep Click, not to sell or lease it. What is not fair is that we created a society that is very dependent on the internet and that people can't afford it. And it is our job as a city to ensure that we can bring affordable, accessible internet to every single home, every single business that needs it, that wants it. It's not a question for me about whether we sell or lease it. I'm glad to see that the City Council is now moving towards a position of what it's gonna take to keep it, and how we, and how we utilize that as an asset for the future. You don't lease a piece of technology for forty years. You just don't. My phone was out of date as soon as I bought it. And it's, it's, it's interesting to see the city of Seattle struggling over how do they do this, that we did twenty years ago investing in the infrastructure that we have in our streets now. And we need to utilize it, and it's an equitable thing that we can do for our community. Internet for everyone and it shouldn't cost.
Yeah.
What info would you need?
So, when I think about Click, I think about how can we utilize this asset so that it can benefit our city of Tacoma? And I think if someone is willing to purchase it, thinking that they're gonna make a profit off of it, then why can't we as a city do the same thing? So, first, let's figure out a way to keep it, make it functional where it's, where it's competing with other networks like Comcast and other internet providers. And I do believe that it's very important that we close the digital divide so that all people in our city can have access to fast, high-speed internet. That is something that is very important and is, is a priority that our city should have. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done.
So, the Click people came down to the Community Council of Tacoma and gave us a presentation recently. And obviously, I don't entirely trust the numbers. I don't entirely trust the fact and figures that they gave us as far as how much money annually Click is losing. But I'm not an expert either. So, the information that I would need is, I would like to see the city bring in an independent auditor and go through the books and go through everything and find out, you know, can this be turned around? Can this be made viable? Can this be made sustainable? Can we turn a profit or at least break even? Or are we really losing money? And, and much like a lot of people up here, I'd rather keep it. I think it's beneficial. We have our own cable and internet providers in the city of Tacoma. It makes us unique. It makes us special. So, my first and foremost thing is, hey, let's look at every avenue we possibly can explore for how to make Click profitable and how can we keep it.
Thank you, Valentine. Tom?
Well, this is a, this is an issue I've jumped into with both feet on. Tacoma, I mean, I don't know a lot of folks know this, but Tacoma was the first municipally-owned Click network, municipally-owned telecommunications system in the nation. Tacoma should have a lot of civic pride for what we have here. And having looked into this issue, as has been mentioned, there's some real questions about the accounting of the leadership at Tacoma Public Utilities. There's some real difficulties with that. And the fact is, they just, they don't wanna deal with it. But it is an asset, and it would be an absolute shame to privatize it. And here's why. For, according to Tacoma Public Utilities' own numbers, for one point, excuse me, one point four to six million dollars, we could have cutting-edge internet speed. And that's something that would create an economic foundation for the city of Tacoma. And Tacoma has had a stagnant economy a long time. This is an opportunity to bring businesses and jobs to Tacoma and rebuild our economy. And there is no way that we should give up Click.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
So, first, the information that I would like to look over would be that budgeting information. See, I have an accounting background, and I'm sure we can locate where that money is going. But above and beyond that, you know, honestly, this was created as a, a public utility, a public service. It was never meant to make money. We invested in the infrastructure and network years ago for ourselves, not to lease to some company. So I think that definitely it should be off the table, leasing or selling. But in regards to what the purpose of this Click network is, first, it does bring competition to the market. Without it, we would see skyrocketing rates on our cable and internet bills. In addition to that, the, the goal should be to make this a free community internet and cable access. That's what it should be. You know, I'm not a super cable TV watcher, but everyone uses the internet. Not everyone has access to it. And in Tacoma, everyone should. And that's the purpose of that.
Take a breath. Take a breath, candidates. Take a drink of water. Take a breath. Has this been good? These are your questions. So the richness of this dialogue is largely because of you and what you have put on these cards. So thank you for that. Okay, so first up on this question is Mr. Robert Hill. So let's get the microphone to Robert. Robert, what's your position on proposals to change Tacoma's form of government from a city manager and part-time council to a strong mayor and full-time council structure?
This is one of the things I've been looking at. I don't support, support the current petition for a strong mayor, because it's cutting the side of the council I want, instead of increasing if I want or leaving it alone. I believe that when you're mimicking the corporate structure of a CEO that has not just one boss, but a handful of bosses. I believe you have one boss, you're deputy mayor, who's your boss? The mayor's your boss. You're the mayor, you got, everybody is your boss. Not four, maybe just five. The current city manager, he only has to listen to five people. That's gonna maintain his contract. He can ignore the other four people or give them less information if they want to. We need to have a strong mayor system that's like most other cities in the country. The city manager proposal came about eighty, nine-hundred years ago in the progressive era to be something different. And Tacoma hit a little later, in the fifties, I believe. We need to have a normal, structural division of the power for government, executive branch, legislative branch, and the judicials, that's not being addressed. We need to have a full-time council of twenty-five, or at least twenty members, that have funding for legislative assistance, like the county council and other city councils.
Thank you, Robert. Very good. Justin?
With twenty-five, we'd all win. So, uh, we'd be great.
Eighteen more.
Yeah, I served on the two thousand fourteen Charter Review Commission last year, where we did propose a form of government change to go to the voters. The research that we found is that there's a school of thought that if you're a really, really, really small city, or if you're a big city, you have a strong mayor. And Tacoma is at that point where we need to have a strong mayor system, and we need to have a strong council that goes along with it, holding everybody's checks and balances. I absolutely think the residents of Tacoma should vote on this. And we've been having a conversation about it for years. It's hopefully gonna come to, to question for us. And let's vote on it, and if it fails, let's move on. If it passes, then we can move on as well. I think that this is a great opportunity. I go to Seattle a lot and sit on regional meetings, and their mayors are there championing projects. They're championing their city. And I think that we need to ensure that our mayor has the strong ability to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Keith?
I think if it's not broke, don't fix it. I like the way our current form of government is. I think the city manager form of government is working. It could, anything could be done better, but it works for our city. It's been working for a long time. I like the idea of having a city manager be accountable to at least five members on the council. I think that's a good way to balance our system. I think it minimizes the, the, the possibilities of having any kind of corruption. I think it minimizes the possibility of any kind of cronyism in our form of government. And I think it's working for us. And we need to keep it the way it is. Also think the way it is now, it creates more opportunities for people to become mayor, for people to, to get more civically engaged. And I think it's, 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 it's been working. So I'm for keeping it the way it is.
Thank you, Keith. Valentine?
So, I'm gonna agree with Keith here on this. I like the system that we have. I, I don't really see any reason to change. I, I think it's working well for us. And I think for me personally, the one reason that I like it the most is, regardless of which one of us gets on the City Council, we're, we're still just part-time. And, and I don't wanna see Tacoma get this sort of entrenched, full-time political class that some other cities have. I like that we're part-timers. I like that we all have a day job. We're all regular people. We're all just like you. We just happen to do this one other thing where we sit on the City Council. I think what we have works, and I think what we have works pretty well for the city.
Thank you, Valentine. Tom?
This is a big issue. Ultimately, it's an issue that's gonna be decided by you. It's decided by a vote of the people. And this is really something that Tacoma should have the opportunity to vote on. We, we didn't get that opportunity when the charter amendment came up, but we really should. Let me say this. Tacoma's been economically stagnant for fifty years. Why? Well, because there's been a lack of vision. The fact of the matter is, when you have a bureaucrat running the Tacoma City Government, that's not a recipe for a vision on how to move forward. We don't have a vision saying, we need to not just keep Click. We need to invest in Click and create an economic foundation that can build our economy for the first time in decades. You know, we've lost jobs for long enough. We, I, I think you have the opportunity with a strong mayor who has the power to be able to take a vision and make it into reality and, and make a Tacoma that we all know can be the city of destiny.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Whitney?
So with the, the proposal that's going to be up before the voters, I'm not for that because it does eliminate some council member positions or make it less sizable. But we are beholden to a city manager. We've had corruption issues in the past. You know, this is, the city manager, if we look into Tacoma's history, has been a position that has drawn some concerns from citizens. That position also gets paid a wealthy sum that can be used for other purposes. I do believe that we can operate strongly as a city with a strong mayor and council representing us as a people, rather than a city manager who more runs it like a CEO. We need to look at our city as an opportunity to develop and, and grow the people here, and not focus our interest on the business and try to attract development. There are people that already live here. We need to take care of them.
Thank you, Whitney. Chris, final word on this question.
Well, I hope this doesn't sound wishy-washy, okay? I started that. But I, I do like the system the way it is right now. I do like our, our city in this direction it's going. However, you know, if we could have a, a mayor like Marilyn Strickland, who was a very strong, very determined mayor, I might consider having just a one-mayor, a strong mayor system. But you can't guarantee that, unfortunately. She's doing a wonderful job. And I feel that maybe someday Tacoma might be ready for that. But for right now, I think that the way we have the system in place, I think this is, this is a good thing. I like the idea that we have some checks and balances. But I'm very proud to say that our mayor now is a strong mayor. But again, you can't guarantee that in the future. So I'd like to stay with it as, as it is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, take a breath. Take a breath and move the microphone down to Justin. Oh, he's got it. Okay, you go ahead, Justin. All right, so this topic we heard a little bit about in the presentations from the Tacoma Pierce County Chamber and from fifteen now, Proposition One. I guess you would say he, he said that he helped to write Proposition One. So the question for the, for the panelists here, the candidates are, where do you stand on the fifteen-dollar minimum wage? Where do you stand on that topic? Justin, you first.
Uh, thank you very much. We absolutely need a raise in Tacoma, and we need a raise in Washington State, and we need a raise in our nation. And I think that we can do that. Fifteen dollars over time is an appropriate way to go about this. And it's not twelve dollars by 2019. And, and I don't think that fifteen dollars overnight is also gonna work too well for a lot of our small businesses and individuals. We need to be pragmatic about it, and I think that we need to be aggressive about it. We can't get fifteen dollars by 2030, but I definitely think that we can get fifteen dollars by 2020. I guess I'm in favor, since there's some proposals out there at the Majority Report with the task force that just came out last week. I do hope that the City Council will put something up on the ballot box to drive that conversation and offer some, offer some options for our voters. for our voters coming to Tacoma. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Keith, where do you stand on fifteen dollars an hour minimum wage?
Yeah, so, again, I grew up in poverty, I understand the needs and concerns of low-income families and struggling with wages on a daily basis. With that said, I do think we need to take an approach that we eventually get to fifteen dollars an hour, and I don't think it happening overnight is the right thing to do for the city of Tacoma and its economy as it stands right now. So, again, we need to get there, we need to do some gradual increases. I'm not sure if I agree with the task force approach, I think it could be stronger and more progressive, but we got to find some balance, and we do need to get to fifteen dollars, but I don't think January 1st is the right approach for our fragile economy.
Thank you, Keith. Valentine.
I think it needs to be set by the state. I think a patchwork of cities raising their minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour here and there, I don't think that's the right answer. Tacoma's not doing great, look around, and like Tom keeps pointing out, our economy's been stagnant for a really, really long time, and I don't see how adding the additional burden on our businesses of fifteen dollars an hour is going to help that situation. If the state does it, at least it's a level playing field, then you don't have to worry about people moving out of the city. As far as for us, no, I do agree with some of the recommendations that came out of the city council task force. I think we could slowly phase something in over the next couple of years and get maybe close to fifteen dollars, if not fifteen dollars an hour, but I think the fifteen now overnight, I just don't, it'd be horrible for the city of Tacoma.
Thank you, Valentine. Tom.
So, when the Chamber of Commerce President comes in, he says, "It's probably time for us to phase in to fifteen dollars." It's probably time to phase into fifteen dollars, you know, that's kind of where we're at. Tuesday, I was at the Chamber, at the city council testifying, as I have for the last ten years here in Tacoma. I've been doing this a long time, talking about affordable housing, talking about paid sick leave, and many, many other subjects, but what I was talking to the council is, you know, Walmart made four-hundred-and-seventy-six billion dollars last year, they can afford fifteen dollars an hour, 2016. Companies that make billions and billions of dollars, let's say you established a third track and that said, anybody who makes over ten billion dollars a year should pay fifteen dollars minimum wage. Now, what that would do, instead of sending money to Wall Street and Arkansas, it would be going into our local economy and building our small businesses, and if I was on the city council, I'd say that's why we're taking it.
Thank you, Tom. Whitney.
Well, it's interesting to hear the opinions of my fellow candidates, this being the fifteen now is a long time coming, it's not something that was done by outside agitators, I worked on that campaign. I believe in fifteen now because I've been on both sides of that aisle. I've made that minimum wage for a long time, trying to support my family, working forty hours a week, and I still have to get food assistance, you know? This is a humane issue right here, there's no reason, we're going to subsidize anyway, you're subsidizing in your taxes that go to the welfare system. Now, would you rather send your money to the welfare system so everyone can get food stamps, or do you want to send the money to their pocket so they can come out and spend at the local businesses that they say are going to disappear when we raise the minimum wage? These are scare tactics, because the minimum wage is, if they would, if they could pay you less, they would. That's why we have a minimum wage. So, let's be serious and give a wage to our workers and in our community that could serve it.
Thank you. Thank you, Whitney. What do you stand on the fifteen-dollar minimum wage, Chris?
I, well, I disagree with Whitney, if I could pay my people less, I wouldn't, because they're very valuable to me. This is a subject that's very near and dear to my heart, because I am a small business owner. We are not Seattle, we are not LA, we are not San Francisco, we have a different economy here in Tacoma. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is where the BNO cuts off for getting discounts between two-fifty and three-hundred thousand dollars. Over three-hundred thousand dollars, you pay the full BNO tax between two-fifty and three-hundred thousand dollars, you get a discount. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is an arbitrary number that the city picked based on, that's what it's going to, for them to make their costs, and that's all that is. Three-hundred thousand dollars, I'll probably make three-hundred thousand dollars in my business this year, I am still not turning a profit. Some people might say I'm running my business incorrectly, and I invite anybody to come in and take a look at my books. I think, as Valentine says, I agree, I think it should be a state-issued minimum wage. It puts Tacoma at a very fair disadvantage, and I do, I'm very excited with the task force, and I hope that they come up with something fair and equitable, because I absolutely believe that we deserve to be capable.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Robert.
I signed a petition because there's so few initiative and referendum issues in Tacoma, having written one myself, but I'm opposed to the minimum wage being set by the state or the city, you are ultimately going to have fewer workers. So, you want to make a choice of fewer workers that have a higher wage, or the suggestion that's this.
Thank you very much. All right, ready for our next question? How are you all doing? Do you need to stand up and relocate the energy from the bottom to the top? Just stand that for a moment. Come on, relocate that energy, you did five questions already, we were going to try to get through ten, but I told you my bedtime is nine o'clock, so. Thank you, candidates, you have really done a good job of staying within your time, I appreciate it, I've not had to take my earrings off, but I will, I have to. Okay, so, tagging is the topic of this question. Keith, tagging, do you know what tagging is? Graffiti and tagging. This question says, "It's a major problem in many business districts, and what will your approach to this problem be?" One minute.
So, I think we need to create more opportunities for young artists to have a positive outlet, and that has happened in some areas in the city of Tacoma, where young people have been able to utilize walls to create murals. In terms of it being illegal in certain areas, I think it's definitely problematic, I think we need to address it by cleaning it up and also create, you know, fines that could help stop that issue. Definitely should not be happening in business districts, that is, that's just not what we need in our city, and we're going to keep our city looking beautiful and looking nice. So, tagging graffiti art in the right places is a good thing, but there are places where it's just absolutely inappropriate.
Thank you, Keith. Valentine.
All right, so, I'm going to waffle on this one a little bit. I grew up in the eighties, so I used to love it when they bombed the train's man, some of it looked really, really good. But if you're talking about, you know, just the somebody's name that you can't even read on the side of the building, no, I think we do need to address that, and I think it's a little unfair, honestly, that we force a business owner to have to pay expensive sometimes to remove something that wasn't there over fall. So, I think we need to aggressively crack down on it, and I think that we as a city need to help those business owners that are the victims of taktis, they're the victim of a crime, you wouldn't tell anybody else who's a victim of a crime, "Oh, you're financially liable for this too," so I think we as a city need to offer some assistance in helping cleaning up the buildings.
Thank you, Valentine. Tom? All set?
So, I mentioned I've been a homeowner in Hilltop for ten years, and I've been a block leader for eight, and so dealt with a lot of issues in the neighborhood, Tacoma's, you know, living on Hilltop thinks are a lot different than they used to be, but there's a lot of, you know, concrete issues, you got irresponsible landlords, and sometimes you have property damage. You know, in the grand scheme of things, graffiti is an issue, it's probably not the worst thing we're facing, but what I'll say is this, it's hard to deal with graffiti when your police force has been cut by seventy cops since the recession, okay? You're not going to be able to deal with an issue like that. Sometimes graffiti, you know, on one hand, I believe in public art, I believe in murals, sometimes graffiti is more like a dog lifting its leg, right? So, I don't think that's what we really need to deal with, and we can't really deal with that sort of negative activity unless we have some police officers who are able to deal with it. Right now, we're dealing with more important issues, so that's a big priority, we need to rebuild our police force.
So, I apologize, I didn't get to hear the full question, I had to use the restroom. I did wash my hands. I think I got the gist of it.
It's that accounting background.
I feel a little concerned that the words that I'm hearing coming out of these candidates are, "We need to increase enforcement for a low offense," you know? This generally will affect a lot of young people in our community, and we're talking about saddling them with fines and imprisoning them. This is something that we can address easily by giving the young people opportunities and services and programs for them to express themselves, and addressing issues that cause these type of crimes. You know, kids don't get into property damage because it's fun, you know? Graffiti isn't artwork, but when we're talking about these, just spray painted up, whatever, it's important that we look at the causes for this. It's poverty, it's not inadequate housing, it's inadequate family life, and these are things that we can address at the community level by providing more services and programs to the families that will be affected by this. I think the wrong attitude is to increase enforcement, our police department gets over a third of the budget already.
Thank you, Whitney. Chris.
I'm like Valentine, I sort of marvel, you know, at some of these pieces, I almost call them pieces, I have an art background, and I could never do it, and so, I agree too with Whitney, I think if we gave, you know, some of these incredibly talented kids a way to express themselves, and maybe it goes to the Art Commission or something, and maybe we actually get some of the kids involved and provide them with a place to do their art and have contests and maybe try to embrace it a little bit. On the other hand, there's, you know, there's blatant tagging, you know, there's game tagging, and I think that's when we really need to enforce it, if it's just blatant tagging, then that doesn't do anyone any good, and it's an interesting question, and so, I think I would personally like to ponder on that one a little bit longer, but otherwise, I think that, yeah, we should address that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Robert.
You may have noticed, I did, a few weeks ago, there was a lot of black ink graffiti on the east side of the shut-down grocery store, and about a week later, these two big blue ink defaces, and what I did is called 311. The city's shutting down the 591, 5001 for graffiti line there, I don't know about the internet group of the site, but we call 311, there's been 211, which is United Way's general social services infrastructure, 311 is a new city government customer service center contact. You basically talk to Kenny or Julie, and you report what you see. You give the intersection, you give the address, what color ink, and if you want to volunteer for crews, I don't know how many there are in the total participation, you want to be on a volunteer cruise for scraping off and painting over the blue and the white ink and other ink, and I see it a lot on your intersections, the power, the power boxes, those metal things, and within a week or two, most of the graffiti that I reported last year or so is addressed. So, as a short-term working solution, call 311 either to report or to volunteer.
Thank you, Robert. Justin.
Thank you. Yeah, we absolutely do need to provide venues for folks that want to do graffiti, and I think the graffiti garages downtown were working really well until, you know, it was abused, and so hopefully we can get back to providing some of those spaces like that in our community. I think if Chuck Face was on the ballot, he might win because that person, or she, might win, because that is the most prolific tagger, everywhere from a little magic marker on a mailbox to the Alaska Way Reservoir on a mural, mind you. And so, we absolutely do need to try and figure out who these people are that are facing our businesses. I'd like to see a lot of our business districts start implementing strategies like downtown did with like a business improvement area, that can have some folks just walking around in the evening time to ensure that folks aren't doing this. I absolutely agree that we need community-based services, code enforcement out there, they've been cut down, and we need to ensure that they're funded, and that the city is helping fund the cleanup. My friend got tagged on his mailbox, and he got several notices in the mail until he cleaned it up himself on his own dime, and perhaps if there's a way that we can get community-based services to partner in that effort.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you. Great, thank you, great answers, all of you. So, let's switch up the dialogue a little bit, talk a little bit about library services in the Hilltop community. Valentine, this one's for you, what will you do to support library services in the Hilltop community?
It's a pretty easy answer, we absolutely need a library in Hilltop. I'm a huge fan of libraries, we're all going to them, I think it's an absolute tragedy that we don't have a library in this neighborhood, and if I'm on the city council, that would definitely be one of the things that I would try for is a library in this neighborhood.
Thank you. Tom.
So, I've been doorbelling since, gosh, last August, I've visited twenty-three hundred homes, and what folks in Hilltop have told me sometimes is that, you know, we've got a library real close with the downtown, but, you know, there's a lot of indigent folks who use that library, and they don't feel comfortable bringing their kids there. So, talking about, how do we, I've brought my daughter there, and sometimes it's okay, but I understand what people are saying, and what I'll say is this, when the Hilltop Library Group was getting together and meeting at Peace Lutheran and had a chance to talk about that issue and wanting to get services here, and the fact that we've lost the old Martin Luther King Library, what people said was this, you know, "We need a spot for our kids that's safe, that they can go after school and feel like they can learn and have a safe place to spend time in the library." And one of the ideas that came out of that is, you know, we've got these schools that are closed, and the idea of going to McCarver or Jason Lee and using the buildings we've already paid for and creating a partnership with the school district to use those to create a safe place for our kids to enjoy the library, that's what I'd like to see.
Thank you, Tom. Whitney.
Well, you know, I used that Martin Luther King Library as a kid growing up, you know, I can't count the amount of books that I checked out from there, that was, we went to that library, not the downtown library, of course, now that that was lost, there wasn't a lot of public support to save that library on pine there. So, moving forward, in order to bring libraries back, we need funding, and right now, the city is not making a lot of effort to fund any type of services or programs that are beneficial to us and that we really need. As I mentioned before, we have people calling for increased public safety, mentioning that we've lost so many positions in the department, which is untrue, those are positions that did not get refilled, and like I said, our city spends seventy-four million dollars a year towards the police department. If we're going to be serious about bringing services like library to the Hilltop, we need to be serious about addressing the blank check that we currently get to our police department.
Learning that libraries are always a place to bring community together, and these days, you know, a lot of kids aren't really reading a lot of books other than in school, you know, they're playing video games, they're, you know, watching movies, they're, they do reading, but they read them on, you know, the pads, iPads, and I don't know what they call it, because I don't have one, so, Kindles, things like that, and so I think that to attract more kids and more community members to utilize the library in this area is to make it more of a multi-use building, you know, so there's classes, you know, obviously encouraging internet, outdoor belling, I've met so many older people that don't have access to internet, you know, which goes back to, again, internet services and click, but I just think that if we were to be able to develop a library that was more than just a library where you checked out books, it was more of a community place where, again, classes, you can check out movies, you can hold meetings, I think that that would make it much more interesting for the community to use and much better benefit the community as well.
Thank you, Chris. What do you think, Robert?
Well, like the parks, libraries are administered by a different political organization, a specific structure, a separate library board of trustees, so people that want to talk about library issues or learning centers need to go to board of trustees meetings, talk to the executive director, Odin Krantz, maybe. maybe suggest that they successfully lobby the state legislature to empower library districts or library bodies to be property tax. They're not allowed to do that like school districts are. Other than that, I don't have any particular plan as a city council candidate regarding the libraries specifically.
Thank you, Robert. Justin?
Thank you. We absolutely need funding. If you actually look at the city budget, just the operating dollars of the libraries continue to go down before we even have a conversation about capital investments of new libraries. We need to have a real conversation about stopping the bleeding on just operating our libraries that we currently have today. I absolutely think that we can leverage the capital facility by using facilities that are already here. I think that the People's Community Center is a great opportunity that if we can find some capital funds to expand that and it can be sort of our star center here in the Hilltop that it is in the South End. You know, working in this community, it is hard to find community space and it's hard to find places where we can meet. And I think that there can be more than just a library space, but we can have a real place in this community that people can meet, gather, read books, get on the internet and swim too. And that's a vision that I'd like to see happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Yes, living with a smartphone. Yeah. I can see it now. Okay, Keith?
Absolutely, libraries are very important. We need to do more to allocate funding so that we can have a library on the Hilltop. I think it's problematic at this point that we don't. I also think we need to be creative when we think about what our libraries look like in terms of making sure they have all the technology that young people are using today as well as making it a place for adults and senior citizens to have access to books and as well as computers and internet. So it has to be a place where that's adaptable for all members of our community. But absolutely having a library in this community is very important.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think that question started with Valentine. I'm amazed. I'm keeping track of who's going first. Okay, Tom, so I think this one is coming to you. This is a pretty serious question that a member of the audience is bringing forward. It has to do with drug dealers. You ready for this, Tom?
Yes, ma'am.
Drug dealers, this person says, are on our corners daily. What is your position on harsher penalties for drug dealers on Tacoma streets? One minute.
Well, again, I've been a block leader for eight years and I live on Cusman. In South Nathan Cusman, we've got a landlord who's not as responsible as he could be. And a lot of times, the negative activity is connected with an irresponsible landlord. And we need to crack down on those serious landlords. I don't believe that we have to have harsher penalties here. Perhaps, I think what we need is, in my experience, we get things done when we come together as neighbors and then work with the community liaison officers. And that helps to deal with the issue. And I feel like, you know, if we have more, I'd like to strengthen that community liaison officer program. And, you know, that's what I've heard from my neighbors. We don't necessarily want to crack down on people. We just don't want it to stop. We want it to stop. And how do you do that? You do that by getting together as neighbors and say, "Uh-uh. You don't do this on my block where my daughter is." And you work with the police in a cooperative way and you stop.
Thank you, Tom. Whitney?
So another harsher penalties for young African-American youth. Whoa. You know, honestly, I'm not sure who posed this question, but I think at a certain point, we need to address racism, you know. For, to see some young black men on the corner doesn't mean that they're drug dealing. You know, we as a society are at this point in time, things are happening all over the nation. And this is a type of attitude that prevails, that automatically assumes that when a black man is hanging with another black man or a Latino man on the corner, then they're drug dealing or they're up to no good. That is an attitude that we need to change. I'm not sure how much the city can do to change everyone's attitude, but further criminalizing the disenfranchised youth of our community is not the answer.
Thank you, Whitney. Good. Thank you, Chris.
I would like to see the communities be more involved. Neighborhoods, neighborhood watches. I think that, you know, when you bring people together, you can make great things happen. I understand what Whitney's saying, absolutely. But I think that if, I think there's like different areas where drug dealing is worse than others, obviously. And I think if they're near schools, I think if they're near anywhere that there's children or elderly or anyone that's susceptible to any kind of violence or being manipulated, I think that there should be maybe harsher penalties zoned maybe around schools. But I think as a community, we can get together, we can maybe do watches, you know, report activity, just be more involved. I think if our communities were more involved and our neighbors actually knew each other and had discourse, I mean, we could actually, you know, drive it out hopefully. And in that way, there's not going to be any violence and we wouldn't have to worry about a lot of harsher penalties.
Thank you, Chris. Robert?
Drugs is a colloquial term for controlled substances, which is referenced by 6950 of the RCW. Until the state legislature decriminalizes, defamizes, legalizes drug possession, dealing, et cetera, et cetera, you're going to have drug dealers on corners. What the city needs to do or can do in the interim is just establish some red light districts to say that you're not, you don't need to be on the street. Most drug dealers, they don't want to be bothered, they don't want to be arrested, they don't want their stuff confiscated. If it was not a crime and you arrested a person, you may be fined for not being registered where you're dealing, it's a monetary penalty. It's not, you bring the threshold of violence down, telling people that want to self-medicate, whether it's with methamphetamine or cocaine or crack or whatever. To not be on the streets takes the state legislature doing something.
Thank you, Robert. Justin?
I look out tonight and I see a lot of involved people. I see a lot of neighborhood watch groups. I see a lot of individuals who are activism and are active and are really working hard at creating a community that we can live, work and play in and one that we can feel safe in. And I'm out all the time. I don't see this proliferation of drug dealing. And I do not think that increasing a fine or penalty or jail time is going to actually do anything. I don't think that when a person is dealing drugs, they're worrying about how many years they're going to get to do that. What we need to do is talk about prevention and talk about maybe needle exchange ideas and how do we work as a community to ensure that we continue to be safe. This isn't a call to be more involved because we are involved. This isn't a call to put more penalties on these individuals. This is a call to how do we continue creating a community that we love and adore and that we can appreciate and want to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Keith?
Man, this is a very heavy one. Drugs in our community, I absolutely agree with Mr. Pretty on this one. There's a huge stigma around black and brown males of color being the face of drug dealers in our community. And that's just not the full scope of our reality. People use drugs, people sell drugs, and more than likely, when people, when white people use drugs, they buy drugs from white people. And that's just the way it operates. So I'm not for penalizing more young people for doing what they know how to do. We need to engage these young people and figure out ways that we could use those selling skills and make them transferable skills and help them figure out how they could tap in into our community and not be marginalized in this community. There's great business opportunities there, but they have talent and they have skills and they're a resource to our community and they're being pushed to the wayside. And locking them up and imprisoning them is not the way to go about it. So we need to figure out ways to wrap around these young people as a community.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you. Valentine?
So I do believe in enforcing the laws that we have in the books. We're a society of laws and we have to enforce the ones we currently have. But to Keith's point, it's opportunity. If the young people in the neighborhood, the people in the neighborhood had opportunities to do anything else than sell drugs, I'm fairly certain that they wouldn't deal drugs. And that's the problem is, we need to improve this economy, we need to get things better in Tacoma so that our young people and the people in our neighborhood have someplace else to go and have something else they can do and have another way to earn money and not standing out there and selling drugs. And again, I don't know. I live on the corner, right around the corner from 19th and MLK. And I don't necessarily see it a whole lot either, but I do get that it's still a problem in the neighborhood. And I think really creating more opportunities for people in the city in Tacoma is the answer to getting rid of it.
Thank you, Valentine. I think that's the end of that question. So Whitney? Here's one, you've sort of alluded to this topic all evening. So how appropriate that you now get to answer this question. But what are your views on police and their behavior in the Hilltop? Especially given recent events with police? And how would you deal with restoring the police budget with programs that seem to have worked?
Well, in particular with Hilltop, the police's involvement there, they have very aggressive tactics for a long time to sweep up a lot of our young youth and put them into the prison industrial complex. That has slowed down considerably since the amount of youth were gone. Now, as teenagers are rising, we see this activity coming back into play. We see, we hear mention of harsher penalties. We hear mention of beefing up our patrolmen. And, you know, I think that's the wrong direction to go. Our police department gets a huge amount of money from us as citizens of Tacoma and we don't have any oversight or accountability into the department. We don't get to see what they spend their money on. They get additional donations. They get surplus military equipment. They have things that we don't know that they use right now and they won't tell us until we ask them or an investigative journalist finds it, like the stingray. So to say that the police need more funding to restore services is inaccurate.
Thank you, Whitney. Chris?
Well, I think, again, going back to community, I think the community, we need to work with the police force. I think that especially in the Hilltop and in central Tacoma, I think we probably, you know, there's a lot more activity on the streets. And I think that if the police could learn how to engage a little bit more with our youth and if we could get some, you know, block leaders to be involved with the police and work with them, go out of patrol with them, you know, kind of watch how they react when they're out in the community. And hopefully that would be something that they would be able to, to actually ride along with them and witness what they see and be another set of eyes besides just cameras and vests. And try to work with them and say, you know, "Hey, you know, I think you're profiling" or "Hey, you know, you're missing that." But have people involved, not just higher ups in the police system, not just government, but actual people.
Thank you, Chris. Robert?
I can't speak particularly to incidents in the Hilltop area. My somewhat humorous contacts with police is more in Sector 1, which is downtown. And half of those have resulted in lawsuits, so I'm a little bit prejudiced in a personal way. I do need to say that the chief needs to be placed with some different chief. Donald Ramsell should not be the current chief. I've spoken before about the citizen effort to demand the council negotiate with the GIL for allowing and putting in force a strong, normal, not just a citizen review panel, but a officer review panel by citizens to have the power to discipline officers. Not just study policies and what the police department should be doing different to maintain its clear orientation that rules our markets.
Thank you, Robert. Justin?
Thank you. We absolutely need to empower our residents in this community in oversight. The citizens' review panel does not have much authority. They create a majority and minority report. It goes to the city manager and then it gets lost in the bureaucracy that we have created of city government. I'd like to see us really look at this construct and see how we can make it more accountable. Maybe their actions are binding and then they have to appeal to the city council to change those. Some ideas that I think that we can look at. I also want us to have a conversation about the sectors. The sectors do not line up by community and so it's really hard for officers to end up having good, strong relationships because the community liaison officers move around a lot. Communities are divided by these sectors and I think that that's also a construct that we need to look at. Finally, what are the policies that we need to pass as a city council to address the issues? We can talk a lot, but what are the actual policies and let's start working on those. Let's address those through the budget and let's address those through council action and let's move forward with some of these. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Keith?
Police accountability is very important to me. Now, I'll give you a quick story. I'm walking down MLK, going to one of my favorite restaurants, Lili's. I have a hoodie on. I go into the store. Prior to going to the store, I see a police officer driving down the street, making a U-turn. I turn around with my food. Guess who's walking to the side of the Lili's restaurant following? The police officer, who then turned away after the host told him, "Oh, he was here. He's here three times a week just buying food." The officer didn't ask him one question, but he certainly followed me in there. We need to have more accountability hands down. And I think we need to make it a priority in our city. But for that to happen, we need five members on the council to also prioritize that issue. I'm the candidate that will sit down and tell an honest stories to other members on the council so that we can really address this issue and make some changes and help Tacoma take the lead on policing in our nation. I think we could do it. I think we have the resources that are available and we can make these changes happen in our community.
Thank you, Keith. Valentine?
So I'm a fan of our police. I like our police force. I'm thankful for our police force. Last night, I walked down to Lele to have dinner with my family. And nothing bad happened to us. Fifteen, twenty years ago, you couldn't have said that, could you? So, no, I think it's really easy and the police have become a target. And I get that there's issues and they're not perfect and they're people too, you know. But there are people that get up and put on a uniform and do a job that nobody else wants to do, but it's a job that has to be done. My God, what would this neighborhood look like without our police force? So are there some issues? No. Do we need a little bit more accountability? Absolutely. I would like to see the citizens' review board having a little bit more power myself. But at the end of the day, I'm thankful for the job that the police do.
Thank you, Valentine. Tom, final word?
You know, I've had the opportunity to engage police in more than one way. And I just want to say that being a police officer is not necessarily an easy job. I met one fellow doorbelling who was from New Orleans. And he said, "Wow, the cops here are so friendly," you know. And I know that might not be everybody's experience. But we haven't had a Lakewood shooting. We haven't had a Baltimore. And I think there are some things that we can say about our police force that we have to say, "Look, you know, they're doing the best we can." Now, I think that we can do better and how do we do that? Our police force went to Glanna to try to recruit police officers of color and didn't succeed. I think we got to figure out how we can have a deeper connection with the community. Eighty-five percent of the police officers live elsewhere. If we can deepen the police officers involved in the community, for instance, coaching kids in basketball,
Thank you, Tom.
then I think, I think we can create a police force that's going to work with our community.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Tough question. And guess what? This is question number 10, if my math is correct. This one coming up is question number 10, which means the last question for all of you. And then you'll get an opportunity to have two minutes, right, panel? Two minutes of closing comments. And I might just make it home for my bedtime by nine o'clock. All right, you ready, Chris? I think the mic is in your hand for this question. The writer says, "What have you done for the Hilltop already? And how will you remain in contact with constituents in your district?" What have you done already and how will you stay in contact with your constituents?
Well, to be really honest, other than patronizing businesses in the Hilltop area, I guess I haven't personally really done anything in the Hilltop area. My focus has been running my businesses in downtown, which is, you know, a neighbor of Hilltop. My focus has been running my businesses in downtown, which is, you know, a neighbor of Hilltop. But what I would like to do is to work with the Hilltop district to encourage more growth, to encourage more vitality, to just bring more people here, just make it a destination for people. And I think that that's just really important, that it's looked on as an exciting, exciting up and coming area. And as we touched on before, with the light rail coming up, I think that we can really build momentum on that. And again, I'd like to be a resource for anyone in the community and the Hilltop community that's interested. My expertise is in being in restaurants. And so if anybody wants to open a restaurant, please feel free to come to me and I would love to help, so.
Thank you, Chris. I'd rather just come eat in your restaurant than let you do the work. Robert?
I've got a peel box right across the street and I think the way that things are looking six months from now, the whole office might be shutting down. If all the boxes, keys and combination were utilized, I think it'd still shut down because of the larger postal service issues. As far as remaining in contact, there are nine dedicated voicemails, phone numbers. I'm the phone guy, 591-5105 is for the mayor. 06 is the next person, 07, 910. People that want to be in touch, if they're not satisfied with the email structure of what council members like, there's a phone way, there's writing letters using postal stamps as something that is a little different than what a lot of people do. And it will get the council members' attention and you will get my attention if you write me a handwritten letter on paper.
Thank you, Robert. Justin?
So what have I done and how am I going to maintain communication? You know, when I think back of some things that I've been involved in, I really am working to try and create a better Tacoma. And looking at my time on the neighborhood council, working on policies that are important and are positive for the community, pushing support letters or pushing back when needed. My best example is the Montrossity apartment garage that sits on MLK and Seventeenth that St. Joseph Rock bought, something that should have never been built. We cannot allow things like that happening again in this community. Looking to the western edge of the kind of defined Hilltop Sprague Avenue entranceway, something that I've worked on with my neighborhood to champion. And then the Hilltop area plan that is visionary about trying to develop some areas that need developing, trying to protect communities that need protecting, and trying to really drive up some commerce in our community. These are things that I've actually shown leadership on. And when I look out into this community today, I look at a lot of faces that I've worked with and I want to maintain that relationship and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith.
For five years straight, I was the co-chair of a festival called the So Just Festival, which was hosted at Evergreen Tacoma Campus, where we brought hundreds of young people to showcase their talents to people in the community and express a message about social justice. So that's one thing. I work with the Tacoma Urban League, which is on the Hilltop, with a gang prevention program called the Mel Involvement Program. Where we engage middle school youth and taught them conflict management, leadership development skills, and help to support them so they can achieve academically. Currently, I work for Peace Community Center, where again, I work with middle school students to help them achieve their academic goals and also help address issues around identity, goal setting, and conflict management. So I made it my life work has been on the Hilltop, working with young people and also engaging this community as a part of the Tacoma Pierce County Black Collective, as co-chair of the endorsement committee for candidates who are interested in running for public office.
Thank you, Keith. Valentine?
So for the last two and a half years, I've been a board member of the Central Neighborhood Council, advocating for projects and improvements in the neighborhood. We've done neighborhood cleanups, we've done trash collections, I mean, we've done a number of things. I volunteered at Tom's last year, which was a huge success. So not deeply involved with some of the other candidates because again, like Chris, I mean, with my involvement in the Central City Events and Recognitions Committee, I've sort of focused more on like the bigger, broader community. But through the CNC, I have done a lot for the neighborhood and I volunteer a lot of time in the neighborhood.
Thank you very much, Valentine. Tom?
So I teach at the community college, not because it gives me a huge income, because it doesn't. It gives me time to be able to put into the community, which I've done for ten years. I've been a block leader, as I've already talked about. You know, the link light rail that folks have talked about? That didn't just come to Hilltop, there was three communities that were fighting for it. And I was once a board member of the Hilltop Action Coalition. I helped to mobilize the community, make sure we have a voice, and make sure where we go to the best spot, which is where it's come. And I want to talk to you guys about the street fair. Now, having lived at Hilltop for ten years, there's all these wonderful parts of Hilltop and it felt like there was pools of energy kind of lying on the ground. It just needed to be gathered up and channeled and expressed to bring the community together. So you had an amazing expression, I mean, five thousand people. And incredibly diverse, it really showed what Hilltop was. How many people went to Hilltop Street Fair? So you know.
Thank you, Tom. And Whitney, you've got the final word on this.
All right, I've been a fellow on the Hilltop. Well, let's see. I have been a leader on the Hilltop. I led the charge to fix the Hilltop subarea plan that lacked low-income housing. And we did win that fight, Neighborhood Resources 7.1 and 7.2, I led that fight. My group also counter-protested a white supremacist march along MLK, right in front of this church. It happened. And we counter-protested that. I have been the lone candidate speaking at the citizen review panel that's been mentioned before, the Human Rights Commission, to address the concerns of, you know, the police and the lack of accountability. There is zero accountability right now in Tacoma for our police. I'm volunteer coach at Al-Davies Baseball. I brought baseball back to Al-Davies after many years, it's been gone. Volunteer student teacher at Dash Center of the Arts before they were evicted out of the building. They're on Fifteenth and Martin Luther King. So I'm very involved in the Hilltop and I have done a significant amount to improve it.
Thank you, Whitney, and thank you, each candidate. Have you got the interview to give the candidates a round of applause? Doing an incredible, amazing job with these questions. I don't think I could have come up with those to these questions. I guess I ask questions all the time on City Line, so. It's tough to be in that seat and then to only have a minute. You know, the organizers thought a minute is not enough. We had like a forty-five minute conversation about whether or not a minute would be too short. Didn't we, panelists? We did, the organizers, we talked about that. But you did an exceptional job giving content in a very short amount of time. So thank you very much for that. And so you'll have an opportunity now. And Tom, I'm going to start with Valentine, just to shake things up a little bit. Valentine, you get to go first. Two minutes.
Two minutes, it's a tough option.
And again, don't make me take my earrings off, it's too late at night.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Very tough.
Closing remarks. Okay.
So I spent twelve years serving in the active duty United States Army. I spent the last four years serving in the Washington Urban National Guard. That's sixteen years of my life that I've been serving. I know what it means to serve. I also have proven leadership experience in some of the most difficult situations in the world. So I don't really think City Hall is going to be that big an issue if I get sent down there. I love to serve, it's what I do, I made my entire life's work. I have served this nation, the city, the state. Everything I've done has been to serve in some way, shape, or form. And so with your vote, I'll continue to serve the city of Tacoma.
Thank you, Valentine. Keith? Actually, you can just go straight down the other direction. How about that, Mr. Breckenridge? You getting your exercise tonight. Keith, two minutes.
And closing, it would be an honor to serve as the next council member representing District 3. My service in this community speaks for itself. I've been here for ten years, working with young people in this community, building bridges between youth and our elders in our community and making those connections. I want to serve. I'm the candidate that will help bring consensus to our Tacoma City Council by building relationships and prioritizing the issues that are important to all residents in this community. And we can make changes together, but we need collaboration, we need dedication, we need hard work. I remind you, I've been endorsed by Lauren Walker, who currently represents this district. I also have the support of Mayor Marilyn Strickland, Councilmember Robert Tomes, and Councilmember Victoria Wooders. They all see me as the future council member who would work with people from all opinions, who have different views and different understandings of what our community needs. And I'm the candidate that can help bring those issues together and find ways that we can move forward to make our city of Tacoma a better place. Lastly, vote for Keith Blodden.
Thank you, Keith. Justin Layton?
When I think about the Tacoma that we want to live in in the next five, ten, fifteen years, I think about the opportunities that are before us that we can have now that can get us there. We've done a lot of great things, but we can do better. When we have, like I mentioned earlier, eight thousand individuals on the waiting list for housing vouchers, we absolutely can and must do better for our community. When we have mothers waiting at the bus for an hour, we can do better in our community. When we have people with disabilities or families in strollers trying to go down the sidewalk that they can because the sidewalk is missing, we absolutely can and we must do better for our community. It's not acceptable. I have had the proven leadership in this community to lead, to listen, to build relationships, and to get things done. I want to take this opportunity to move that experience down to the diocese City Hall. I have regional experience, I understand how Tacoma fits into the regional context of the Puget Sound. We are the second largest city in the Puget Sound and we need to act like it and we need to show our leadership across the region. These are real problems. We've heard them through the questions asked today. And we need to ensure that we have strong leadership, proven leadership, that can get these things done. My name is Justin Layton and I'm running for the city council and I hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Mr. Robert Hill?
Of the five districts in the city, the third district has the lowest registration count possible and generally the lower turnout rate in any election compared to the other of above four districts. At the beginning of our segment here, I said we have to have structural changes that I believe is important to bring about. More representation, more voices on the city council, diverse voices on the city council. And that involves two things. Adding to the size of the city council and changing how they're elected. If you can imagine the mayor, the ninth person, every one of us in this room supposedly has five representatives in the city council. The mayor, the three attorneys, and District 3. How many people really know all five of your representatives in the city council? If you can imagine a system where there's eight races, electing the three in November, where you're taking the top three in November, you can be elected with one-third of the vote. You can actually be elected with one over three plus one, one-fourth of the vote because of the remainder for the fourth candidate. You have the top six in the primary going to the primaries. Only one of us would be eliminated. You'd have six voices bringing up issues, whatever they are, for another two, three, four months instead of being shrunk down to two because of the top two primary structure. Well, we have a charter, we can have our own style of government. And if we had a bigger council where you elect the top three winners in the general election, you lower the threshold, you have political minorities able to be represented. Conservative Democrats, liberal Republicans, Greens, Libertarians, whatnot. That's something I want people to think about. I'm disappointed with the collection of charter proposals, charter amendment proposals from last year, removing the ten, ten sponsor requirement for one thing. These are two charter requirements, I would be pushing for that. I want people to support that concept, to support Robert Hill for the city council.
Thank you, Robert. Chris Blondin?
So there was one thing I didn't get to talk about that's on my personal agenda for the future. Tacoma does need a good economic backbone for now and the future. While Chris Blondin, the restaurant owner, is not going to have a lot of impact in certain things in the city, I think Councilwoman Blondin would. And what I'd like to see is, you know, we are a blue collar town, okay? We are a town that's proud of our roots. And a lot of our kids that are graduating from high school are pushing them off into universities. And that's a big issue for me. Well, I did graduate from college. My husband and my son did not go to college. They're both tradespeople. My husband's a carpenter, my son's a plumber, and they're very smart and they are very good at what they do. My goal as Councilwoman Blondin would be to work with the school district and I would like to start a school of trades. We have right now the School of the Arts, which is a proven success. We have this Science and Math Institute, which is a proven success. But a lot of the kids that go to high school these days, they really struggle. And I think that they're not wanting to go to university or maybe their parents can't afford to send them to university. So my goal, I would like to see at some point in the future, and I would like to lead the charge, is to bring our high school to this town where we can teach our kids, you know, give them a good education and actually give them a high school diploma and a set of skills. So when they leave high school, we're not just giving them a diploma and saying, hey, have a great day, have a nice life. And I just think that this is something important for our future of Tacoma and for the future of our children. And I really look forward to working with you. I hope you vote for me. I'm Chris Blondin and I hope you vote for me.
Thank you, Chris. Whitney Brady?
So as a longtime resident and citizen of this district, you know, I don't particularly want to have a representative at the council that's been groomed and supported and endorsed by the current politicians of our city, especially when we feel dissatisfied with their service to us. I think it's important to reiterate, you know, as much as all these may be good people, nice, that's all, that's all great, but when it comes to getting things done at the council level, things that will help the people of our community, I'm your guy for that position. A lot of the questions here, you can hear the conservative and moderate viewpoints from the other candidates. I am clearly the most progressive candidate. Some of the issues that have come up, the low-income housing, police accountability, these are issues these guys were talking about three or four months ago. These are my issues because I work on them. You'll hear speak of, you know, low-income housing from people that actually worked against low-income housing. If you dig into the histories of all the candidates, you'll see a lot of shifting of positions. You have representatives up here speaking about the police accountability or the lack of a need for it because we haven't had some high-profile instances. Well, I beg to differ. We have. We have members in the audience that their family were murdered by the Lakewood Police Department less than six months ago. We have Ron Holstrom, University Place. So to pretend that these are not things that are important or to have representatives get up and speak about these issues that they're not thoroughly knowledgeable about, but speak in a way to you, misrepresents what the council is supposed to do. And that's be a voice for the people. I'm not going to lie and move my position. I am Whitney Brady and I am the progressive candidate.
Thank you, Whitney. Final question, final word.
May I see Tacoma as, you know, everybody talks about Tacoma has so much potential. Tacoma has so much potential, you know? And people have been saying that in the city of destiny for, what, a hundred years now? I mean, imagine it's like a boulder on the edge of a cliff. You know, you still got to push the boulder off the cliff and that hasn't been happening. You know, when I think about Tacoma, I think about my daughter, she's six years old. And I think about how do we build a Tacoma so that when she grows up, not only does she want to stay in Tacoma, she can stay in Tacoma because there are jobs for her. Right now, you know, Tacoma is a situation where twenty-five percent of folks have a university degree. Where are the jobs for everyone else? How do we create an economy that everybody can benefit from? One of the things that I feel like is, you know, we need to be able to have a vision of a roadmap of where we're going. of where we're going to get a Tacoma that actually fulfills its potential. So, you know, in Hilltop, I've lived here for 10 years, and again, we needed, I felt like we needed some kind of event that could bring the community together. And worked on that, talked about it for two years. You know, eventually, R and I got together and worked, created a partnership with the Hilltop Business Association. And we had an event that was beautiful. And it brought people from outside Hilltop that changed their perspective, like, oh, you know, I don't, it's not what I thought it was. And people are coming back. And Tacoma has some of the same issues. People have, Tacoma has a reputation that, what do people in Seattle think of us? Well, I don't care what they think about us, but I want their jobs moving here. And how are we going to do that? Well, we got to work on changing Tacoma's image and effectively. So I'm excited about that. There's a vision for a better Tacoma. And, you know, I've got the experience here in the community to do it. And I'd like, love to represent our community. My name's Tom McCarthy, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You all did it. You are all amazing. You did it. Nobody fainted.
And your earrings.
And my earrings are still on. Nobody's sweating. And we are about to close this event. Did you enjoy this? This is amazing.